All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the St. Catherine Drexel Catholic Community Town Hall. My name is Mike Sudeman. I am a trustee here at the parish and will serve as the master of ceremonies for today's event. A few comments on the structure for our session. I'm going to begin by reviewing some of our parish's recent accomplishments and provide you with an update on our current membership. Following my remarks, I'll be walking through a series of questions that we in parish leadership have received over the past weeks and months. A member of our panel will then answer the question. The slide that will be presented during their answer will provide some summary information about the answer. Note, this is only summary information. It's not a word-for-word recitation of what they are saying. We want to move this session along as quickly as possible, but we do have a lot of information to convey, so I'll ask that the panel limit their responses. As I told them last night, there will be a timer for everyone except Father Paul. Our session is being recorded and will be available on the parish website in the near future. We will also be providing all of the questions and answers in written format on the website in the near future, so that you have the information in multiple ways. We're going to ask that you hold all questions till the end of the session, and then the panel will be available for individual questions at the end. We want to be respectful of everyone's time. So, that's the structure of our session. Let's move in and look at what we've accomplished here. So, we start everything at St. Catherine Drexel with our mission. Our mission is to seek Christ in all and be Christ to all. So, we want to look at these accomplishments within the context of that mission. First, spiritually, we have achieved a number of things. First, we have continued to grow as a community sacramentally. We have baptized a number of new Catholic Christians. We have confirmed a number of confirmation candidates. We have also walked with people as they have joined the Catholic faith. So, we have grown sacramentally. We have also achieved a number of important milestones in regards to our operations. The PAC land deal, as Father said at Mass, represents a huge milestone on our path to building a permanent church structure on our land. We also, I think quite impressively, continue to provide services during the COVID pandemic and beyond, and as part of that, we actually found a way to extend our services by offering the livestream, which is not only allowing people that aren't well to attend Mass remotely, but is also a key service to shut-ins and has opened up other markets for our parish. Believe it or not, we have received donations from New Jersey as part of the livestream. So, as I tell Father Paul, he is now a televangelist. So, we've also established our presence on the church land by building our church storage building, and as we have done many times in the past, our community responded to a need by raising almost $44,000 through the Adopt a Bill program, which Paul will talk about here in a little while. Not only have we done things internal to the church to make operations better, we've also fulfilled the mission by being of service to the community. We've supported the community both directly through our monthly parish tithe and also through organizations like the Knights of Columbus. Moreover, we have seen explosive growth in our youth program under Troy's leadership, five times growth in just the past couple of years. We've also reestablished or created a number of committees that are going to be crucial to us as we continue to grow our membership toward that 500 household goal that Father mentioned earlier. He'll provide additional detail in that during the panel discussion today. Looking at our membership, as Father said at Mass, we are at 452 households, our highest-ever household count at St. Catherine Drexel. So, if you look at the graph that Troy is going to put up here, you'll see that we are making steady progress toward that 500 household goal. Now, while some might see the regular, almost the steady state of that line as a point of concern, I see it as a strength, because during COVID, a lot of faith communities actually lost membership and have not seen that membership returned. Not only has our membership returned or stayed steady in terms of households, it's actually grown quite a bit here, as this past week has evidenced. Overall, we're making good progress toward that 500 household goal that was set for us by the Archdiocese. So, that's a summary of our accomplishments. We have a lot to be proud of as a community, and I think that these accomplishments set good context for me to bring in the panel. So, at this point, I'm going to ask the panel to go ahead and introduce themselves. If you'd give us your name, panel, and your role here at the parish.
Thanks, Mike. Good morning. I'm Kathy Reed, and I'm a trustee here at St. Catherine Drexel.
I'm Father Paul and a televangelist.
Ron Sudeman, I'm Chair of the Stewardship Council.
Deacon Randy, I'm signed here as a deacon. I also serve as the volunteer parish business administrator.
Good morning. I'm Paul Keenan, and I'm Finance Council Chair.
And I'm Kathy Province, and I am Chair of the Capital Campaign.
Thank you, panelists. Let's go ahead and get started with our first question, then. Much has been said about the Archdiocese and building policy. So, this first question is for my dad, Ron Sudeman. Dad, why does the Archdiocese have this policy regarding capital campaigns and buildings?
From a period of 2008 through September of 2014, the Archdiocese had a moratorium on all building. This was caused by the fact that, at that point in time, there were 25 churches in the Archdiocese that were $92 million in debt. And at that same time, when we started our first capital campaign, we solicited help, which was required by the Archdiocese, from three outside consultants regarding our capital campaign. All three of those consultants, when we were interviewing them, indicated that this capital campaign for St. Catherine Drexel was the only one related to building something. All the other capital campaigns that they were running was to repay debt, basically interest. So, again, there were a lot of churches that had built with little or no money in the bank, and as a result, went significantly in debt and had to run numerous capital campaigns. As a result of that, the Archdiocese put in place a rule that said you had to have 50% of the money in the bank and 50% pledged. I have a sister that lives out in the New Ulm Archdiocese. The same rules apply out there, so there's nothing unique about us. So, again, it's, as Father mentioned regarding the first reading this morning, we have to have patience.
Thanks, Dad. The next question is for Deacon Randy. Deacon Randy, why is St. Catherine Drexel not constructing our permanent church structure, and why is it taking so long?
Shortly after the parish was formed, Christianer Jerry Bauer and his wife Heidi donated roughly 34 acres of land to us in the intersection of 161st and Varialite, the rest of the block immediately east of Ramsey Central Park. We decided, let's look at what we might be able to build for our permanent structure on a portion of that land. We knew right away there was more land than we would need even long-term. Formed a building committee. They worked with Station 19 to draw up some plans. Those kept getting revised, just to kind of get an idea of what kind of money are we going to need before we can build something that meets our space needs. We then formed our first capital campaign committee, which Ron is one of the co-chairs of that, and that committee had set a goal of $1.5 million. Our pledges came in a little bit less than that, but we actually collected almost $100,000 more than what our pledges were. And all the consultants will tell you all the time that you need to kind of temper your pledges, because you're only going to collect about 90% to 95% of your pledges, while we actually exceeded pledges. So, again, that shows the generosity of our people. We made very clear in that first capital campaign, this is not a campaign to build. This is a campaign to help us meet that requirement of the money that we need to have in the bank, and future campaigns will supplement that, as well as giving us additional pledges that we can use to meet that total overall requirement. We formed a new building committee, and they came up with the idea that we're going to do a design bill. So, rather than working with a contractor, I mean, with an architect, we work with a contractor. We solicited proposals from 13 contractors, interviewed 11, selected Langer and Associates. They then contracted with Station 19, the same architect we had used earlier, to come up with a concept. So, when you look at our webpage and see that fly-through, that's a concept. That's not, this is what we're going to build. There are some things that that shows that we know we're never going to do that. One of the things we did do is, everybody we talked to always says, when we built, first we cut out to get the cost down was storage, and we regretted that. That's why we went ahead and built a 30-by-40 storage building, largely with volunteer labor, quite a bit from the Knights of Columbus, but from other parishioners. And if any of you are interested in helping finish the siding, the taping, the painting, talk to us afterwards, and we'll put you to work. So, the second campaign, we formed that committee, and we were going to kick it off in early 2020. That's when the pandemic hit, and we said, okay, this is not a good time. So, we put it on hold for a while, committee kept meeting. Finally, we said, no, we can't wait any longer. So, in May of 2020, we kicked off that campaign, and we got pledges from roughly a fourth of the parish. Now, some people were not able to pledge because uncertainty in the economic future. In fact, some of them had already been laid off their jobs. Other ones made a pledge, but maybe not as much as they would normally have made, again, because of economic uncertainty. Now that things are a little bit more back to normal as far as employment goes, we need to get more pledges in there, or those who already pledged, maybe increase their pledge. A good example, we had one household that pledged, I believe it was about $25,000 to the campaign initially. They've now given $153,000. So, we are completing that first three years of our campaign in May of 2023, and that's when we'll assess what we can actually afford, meeting those requirements of cash on hands and pledges, and come up with a design to meet that and hopefully begin construction.
Thank you, Deacon Randy. The next question is for Father Paul. Father Paul, St. Catherine Drexel has $3.4 million in investments. Can we build something smaller and expand later? Can we start smaller like Lord of Life and build on as funds become available?
Okay. The simple answer is threefold. First of all, yes, the plan all along has been to build in phases. The concept we have now was intended to be Phase One. The earlier one that we did way, way back with Station 19 is the same, would have been the same size as this complex here, and would not serve our purposes at all. So, secondly, no, we really cannot build smaller, because square footage and adequate spaces needed to meet current programming requirements and to account for possible future growth requirements. Our present space is severely limited and has had a limiting effect on scheduling meetings and ministries and programs and events in the space that we currently have. It would be a mistake to not build larger to correct that deficiency. And yes, we will examine how we can cut costs and limit the frills in order to complete a Phase One, but not go into insurmountable debt. Remember, what we have right now is just a concept. It is not what we will actually build, so just to give us some momentum, I guess. The goal of 5 million for the campaign, for this campaign, is just that, a goal that we would like to meet. However, the plan all along has been that in May 2023, as Randy indicated, we will total up the money we have on hand and the amount possible from outstanding pledges, and we will work with Langer Construction Company and its architects to come up with a design that meets our space needs and can be built for the amount that we actually have. We have approval from the Archdiocese for the design phase, because we've had that for some time because of what we've been doing already with designing. When we get that design settled, we will seek the necessary permission, or what they call proxies, for us to build. We have to get that from the Archbishop. We have to be able to show the Archdiocese that we can pay for the construction with current membership that we have at that time.
Thank you, Father. The next question is for Kathy Reed. Kathy, can St. Catherine Drexel reduce construction costs by building the same time as PAC? And if so, why don't we do that?
Thanks, Mike. So, the short answer is yes. We are in constant contact with PAC Charter School, so literally daily contact with PAC Charter School, and we will take every opportunity to share efficiencies in building as we can. There are things that, like parking lots and sewer and things I don't understand about construction, that we can combine efficiencies, and we will continue to search for opportunities to do that as our permissions from Archdiocese and our budget and timing allow.
Thanks, Kathy. Yeah, just a comment. We're in constant communication with PAC. I think, Randy, you shared that you didn't get an email from PAC on Wednesday and thought your email was out. That's how frequently they are in communication with us, and we're in communication with them.
Tuesday was the closing, so that check that you saw, that was the day that all the paperwork was filed and the money went in our bank account. And prior to that, it was numerous emails and phone calls. In fact, our attorney bill that we just got for over $11,000 kind of shows how many times I was in communication with them over the last few weeks, but it's constant communication.
All right. This next question is for Kathy Province. Kathy, will a solidified building design and plan help with raising additional funds for the capital campaign?
So, that was part of the concept drawing, to use that concept drawing as a motivator, even though it is just a concept. And by the way, if you have not yet taken a look at that concept drawing and the fly-through, please go to the website underneath the Capital Campaign, and there's a lot of information there, and you can, you know, at least get an idea of what is happening there. Even though it would be great to, you know, have that final design, we still need to have the money first. We need to have half in the bank and the other half pledged. So, that's our ultimate goal.
Thanks, Kathy. Yeah, how many people here have seen the movie Field of Dreams? Yeah, good movie if you haven't seen it. The reason I bring that up is, if you build it, they will come, is not an allowed strategy under the Archdiocese. As Kathy P. said, we have to have 50% in the bank, 100% pledged. This next question is for my dad. Dad, can we cut costs by parishioners donating labor?
Well, first of all, the priority is always going to be to follow safety city contractor and insurance standards. That is a priority. But yes, we can work with our contractor to ask him to identify through the subcontractors where we could help. As in the case of building the storage building, the KCs participated extensively in the building of that, but we took no shortcuts. It was all under the direction of a contractor, and all licenses and standards and inspections were totally met. So, again, yes, that is an opportunity for us. We will see what that, how that progresses as we continue to move to building the church and working with our contractor.
Thanks, Dad. The next question is for Father Paul. And panel, I'm going to call an audible here. I'm not going to say, I'm not going to ask Father Paul if he plans to have a cemetery. I'm going to ask if St. Catherine Drexel plans to have a cemetery, and is there enough land left to accommodate that? Father?
Okay. First of all, while this idea has been talked about, there is no plan at the present moment to consider a cemetery. Our focus has always been on how best to accommodate the building of a permanent church for us, thus the decision to sell some of our land to PAC Charter School to help with raising some of the funds. There is a possibility of having a columbarium for cremated remains, but there are a lot we've discovered. I have a friend who worked for many years for the Catholic cemeteries, and I've discovered that there are all kinds of regulations, diocesan as well as state, in order to, that we have to explore further to see whether or not we can actually do a columbarium or not. There is probably not going to be enough land to do an actual cemetery. You need oodles of acres for that kind of thing.
Thank you, Father. The next question is also for you. If we have a budget deficit and are trying to raise funds for a building, why did we spend money on a piano?
It's a good question, and I appreciate it. I will take total ownership for the response to this, total ownership for the fact that we have a new piano. My background, ever since we began as a community, we've put a priority on liturgy and on music that supports and enhances our worship. It's always been a priority. But since the time of a number of our previous liturgy music directors, we've been receptive to the idea of a good real piano, rather than just an electronic one, for leadership of liturgical music. Earlier this summer, we received a call from a member of our parish saying that their neighbor was selling their house and moving out of state, and that the neighbor had a piano and was looking for a good home for it. I asked Todd, our present music and liturgy person, to take a look at it, and he went over to speak with the woman and visit with her, and he searched out the piano, and it was a very good piano in the first place. Online, I priced pianos of this particular brand, and they run anywhere from $16,000-plus to $25,000-plus, and she was asking $1,500. I determined that to be more than a reasonable price for a good piano. Now, there were other expenses, of course, moving it. You have to have a professional mover to do a piano, and a permanent dolly for it to rest on so it can be moved around. But I determined that it was a good investment for us for now and for the future. So, as pastor, I approved of it with the stipulation that no budgeted funds would be used for its purchase and expenses, and therefore to ask for donations. When I was at St. Patrick's in Oak Grove, we, at the time I was there, we were trying to purchase a grand piano, and we didn't have the funds for it at the time, and people really wanted it, and so we sold the keys. So, we decided to do that here as well. It was not an obligation for anyone to contribute unless they wanted to. Many people did that, as I did personally. After many of the keys depicted on the wall were taken and donations made, a couple in the parish spoke to Todd and said, if there's anything left over, we will cover that, and they did. So, that's how we got the piano. I just want to emphasize again, it's a good investment for now and for the future, and that no budgeted funds were used for this expense. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. Now, when we do town halls here at St. Catherine Drexel, we don't just rely on the leadership that you see up here. We call on a number of special guests, and one of our special guests is going to answer our next question, which is, why do we need to feed the youth at skim activities, and why do we spend so much on the mission trip? Troy, could you queue up our video from our special guest, please?
Hi, my name is Grace Shawn, and for those of you who don't know me, I'm an 11th grader at the Big Lake High School. I'm involved in student council, NHS, sports, and school board, and I'm a contributing member to the core team at SKD. I choose to come to St. Catherine Drexel because of the community, friendships, and environment that I have experienced. In my opinion, when choosing a church, it should be about the people and the relationships that are made there. When I walk into a Monday night youth night, I see a bunch of kids laughing, playing games, eating dinner, and an overall welcoming environment. Now, this isn't just for those who are outgoing and extroverted, but also for those who are on the shy side. Our youth program has been rebuilt so that it fits each person's needs and wants. It has also grown and achieved so many things. In just a few days, a few years, we have enough people to have a core team of seven members. We need the core team to add structure and communication throughout the youth. When I think of SKD, I think of home. This is where I was baptized and where I grew up. I remember going to Generations of Faith and running around with my church friends while my parents played bingo and thinking that it was so cool to play tag or running in between the tables and chairs. I would never have thought that I would have such a strong connection to this church, but the impact that mission trips, youth nights, and the people that come to SKD have on me is just unexplainable. It is so strong, meaningful, and heart-touching that it can only be explained if you experience it for yourself. St. Catherine Drexel is a place that welcomes people from all walks of life, a place that is there for you when you're going through a hardship, a place that allows you to grow through your faith, and a place that gives you a why or a reason. Having a reason or a why is so important to me. Your reason to come to SKD continually should never, should be ever changing. Your first reason for coming may be the free food at youth nights. Then, as you come more often, like every Monday night, you start to make friendships and connections, and then that becomes your why. Or maybe it's the games we play and being able to be part of something bigger than ourselves. Now, we might be considered a small church, but to me, I don't see that as a bad thing. I see that as a benefit, because being small gives you the chance to have a personable and empathetic church life. It gives you the chance to really get to know your neighbor or the person you sit next to during Mass. This also gives you the chance to be involved and feel like you have a say. Overall, the impact that SKD makes on its youth is powerful and something that can give a person struggling to find their path light or a beacon to help them along the way. I choose SKD because of the strong and faithful community.
Let's go ahead and give Grace a hand, even though she's not able to join us here. That was awesome.
Mike, I would just add that I've talked with some parents who's, people who, children who've been part of the youth program here, and they've gone off to college, and a number of them are involved in church at the college at which they're at. So, the faith keeps moving, and its foundation is here, and I think we're providing a well and a good foundation with Troy's ministry. So, we want to keep that going.
Thank you, Father. The next question, we're going to turn to a more tactical look at the parish's finances here, and this question will be for Paul. Okay, Paul, what are the current state of the parish's finances, and how do we manage our budget?
Thank you, Mike. And I guess I want to start first by, I guess, we've had a lot of talk so far about capital campaign, the new church. What I'm going to talk about really has absolutely nothing to do with, about that. It has everything to do with the space that you're sitting in, the people around you, the people in front of you, the programming that we offer, so the operational side of things. I guess you could think about it as, you know, what do you need to do on a day-to-day to keep your household running, so on and so forth? Or if you have a business, what do you have to do to keep that business running? So, we have all of the same bills that many of you all have. Majority of that goes to the staff and actually just having this building around us, the rent, the electrical, so on and so forth. Finance Council exists for us to provide guidance to Father Paul on those financial matters. One of those is developing an annual budget and then monitoring that monthly based on the income and expenses. That budget is typically based on the previous year's budget and then adjusted for any programming changes that the parish sees as we move forward through the oncoming year. I would have to say this year, the staff did an amazing job giving us a much more realistic view of that budget, and I'll get into a little bit more of that on here in a second. St. Catherine Drexel is not a for-profit organization. Every year, we essentially start looking at it as zero. Our income has to match our expenses, and all of you sitting out here are the primary source of that income. source of that income. It is the parishioners. That's what we rely on day in and day out, to make ends meet, to provide the programming, to keep the lights on. When we look at last fiscal year, which ended on June 30th, we were running a slight deficit for the year. Now, we were able to cover that. We've had other years where we've, we've been able to put a little bit of money in a savings account. It's not a huge savings account, but we were able to cover that deficit. As we look at the upcoming year and where we're at year-to-date, so that would have started July 1st of 2022, sorry, I had to think where we were for a second, we are running slightly ahead of budget. Now, a majority of that reason is because of our adopt bill program, and I'm going to talk about that here a little bit more in depth before another question. Had that not been in place, we probably would be seeing a deficit so far year-to-date. And we're only three years into the new year, or three months into the new year. As we look at that weekly income from collections, whether that's online or in person on the weekends, again, we're running below. I guess we ask that everybody, you know, when we put this budget together for this year, we had numerous actions. One of those was to increase online giving. I ask that everybody consider that. It really helps us when we try to create a budget for the following year. But on a personal note, you know, I've been doing online giving for several years. Inflation has been happening. Many other things have been happening. I haven't adjusted that. Yes, I should have been, and yes, we did, and I encourage everybody to look at that because times are changing, and if you are able to, I know many times we are still in a little bit of an uncertainty, you know, review that because nothing is ever getting any cheaper. Our expenses are going up on a year-to-year basis, and we don't want to have to cut any programming. We are monitoring the budget on a monthly basis, and we've instituted some new policies along the way. We've asked the staff to take a more detailed look at the budget on a monthly basis, and we've also asked them to come to us before that spending happens, if they need to go over budget for a specific line item. So a lot of positives happening as we try to monitor the situation. Hopefully, we can get ahead of it and don't have to worry about it, but it's something that we want to keep in, in front of us. So again, thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul. The next question is for Deacon Randy. Deacon Randy, how do we justify the staff that we have when we're struggling to make ends meet?
Staff salaries and benefits is roughly forty-seven percent of our total budget. When we began looking at, how can we come up with a balanced budget, we did not give the staff as large an increase as probably what was justified, again, considering inflation. They were not even able to keep pace with the proposal that we had. But we have a very small staff based on the size of our parish. There's a lot of things that other parishes have paid staff doing that we have volunteers doing. For example, we, for quite some time after our formation of our parish, we had a front desk secretary. When she decided to leave to go back to school, we solicited volunteers to come in to staff that front desk each day, so we're not having to pay a secretary. As I indicated, I'm the volunteer business administrator. Other parishes our size have a paid administrator. Our accounting, people entering the invoices, entering the contribution records, again, is being done by volunteers. Cleaning and maintenance, again, we don't have a maintenance staff, that's all done by volunteers. So there's a lot of things that are happening in the regular operations area of the parish that we're using volunteers for. So the staff that we have are just the professionals. If we didn't have those people, there's programs that we would not be able to do because of the programs that they put in place, and they've got the background and the expertise as to how to conduct those. So reducing staff is not really an option without sacrificing programming. We did take a look at, okay, we've got one part-time position, can we eliminate that? Felt, no. Services that person is providing is too critical. We had two anonymous volunteers in the parish that came forward that gave us enough contribution to fund that position, to keep it in place. So we do not have a staff larger than what we need to have in order to be the parish we need to be.
Thanks, Randy. I think it's also important to point out that all of the maintenance, not just done here, but on the storage building and at the parish house, is done by volunteers. The painting of the walls here in the parish, for example, replacing carpeting, painting at the rectory, the siding, as indicated earlier on the new storage building, that's all volunteer work. Please, Father.
We have a very, very small staff for the size of the parish that we have, and Amanda and Troy and Todd work a lot of hours beyond what they would normally have to do if they were in this position in a larger parish, and they've come through with flying colors constantly. So I deeply appreciate them and what they have given to this community of faith, so I hope you will support them in that. Secondly, I've heard from some priests that I've talked with, that they know of parishes where the only staff is the priest. Everybody else is volunteer, and so therefore, they don't have a lot of programming, they don't have a lot of services for their community members because of that, so.
Thank you, Father. Paul, a few moments ago, you mentioned all those bills on the wall. Why are there so many bills on the wall, Paul?
Well, I'm so glad you asked, Mike. Those bills on the wall, if you will, I don't know how many of you have played Monopoly, but really our get out of jail free card, but also you ever, you know how you put the money in the middle and land on free parking and you win that? At least, that's how we play with our kids. Everybody loves to land on that free parking spot. Anyways, why do I bring that up? One, those bills are on the wall. I guess I'll get into Monopoly game here in a second, but hold on. When we were looking at the draft budget, we basically said that we have about a thirty-eight thousand dollar gap. We were strategizing on how do we address that gap. Many of the other questions that, you know, have been commented, we're not going to cut staff, we're not going to cut programming, we can make some adjustments in that area. As we were monitoring that draft budget, adopt a bill came up. It's been done successfully here at St. Catherine Drexel a couple times, and to the tune of about eleven thousand dollars. So that's about what we planned as part of narrowing that gap. We have those up there. The green ones are larger portions, and then the blue ones that surround them are smaller ones. So if you can't take one of the green ones or can't fit it into your budget on a monthly basis or weekly, or monthly basis, there's other small ones over there that hopefully would fit into your budget. But that's why those are up there on the wall, to help us address the budget gap. Now, that was the get out of jail free part. So far, we have raised over forty-three thousand dollars. So for us, finance council, St. Catherine Drexel, programming, that's the free parking. I can't thank you enough. We can't thank you enough. We should all be so proud of what this parish has done to come through. Hasn't totally erased that gap. We still have some items to rectify as we move forward, but we are a long, long ways down the line in, in totally erasing that gap. So I can't thank everybody enough. You should be very proud for those of you that have been able to help, and hopefully we can continue to make that program successful. It already is. So we do ask that if you do have any suggestions on how we can help moving forward, please bring them to us. We're always open to suggestions, and I know last night after we did this, we got a couple afterwards, just in terms of communication, and really, really appreciate that. So thank you all very much, and thank you, thank you for your contributions thus far to the adopt bill program.
Thanks, Paul. Just want to give everyone an update here. We want to be respectful of your time. We only have seventy-eight more questions to, no, I'm just kidding. We have five left, and then we'll send you on your way for a beautiful fall Sunday. So the next question is for Kathy Reed. Kathy, I've been noticing core households leaving the parish. Why?
Well, first let me start by saying, we are all core households. Every household that's a member of this parish, every person, every individual is important, tremendously important to us, and it's what makes St. Catherine Drexel special. The fact that we notice if somebody leaves the parish is also what makes St. Catherine Drexel special, because we're such a close-knit community that it does hurt when people leave, right? We take it personally. The reality is, we haven't actually lost, there's not a mass exodus, we haven't lost a lot of families, but we just notice when we do lose them. It's super common in all parishes, and sometimes people leave because they move away, sometimes they leave because they pass away. There's all sorts of reasons, and sadly, sometimes people leave because they maybe have, they're maybe misinformed about something that was happening in the church. And the reason why I point that out is, you're all here to get informed, and you should applaud yourself, and I applaud you for being here, and I would encourage you to, you know, if you have questions, ask them about something that's happening in the church, and if you hear somebody who's, who has questions, please direct them to someone who can answer them, so we don't spread misinformation, we don't spread rumors, as we know, not all rumors are true. So, yeah, so I think that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Kathy. The next question is for Father Paul. Father Paul, I've heard that we are not considered a parish by the Archdiocese. Is this true? Is there something that we can do to make that decision change, and are they thinking of closing us down?
Good questions. Two-part answer. First of all, while we have been in existence as a faith community for seventeen years, going on eighteen years, we are still considered a parish in formation. That's the title. Or as you want to look at it from the canonical law, canon law perspective, we're a quasi-parish. We do function, however, as a full-pledged parish, and so anyway, part of this, I think, is, from our perspective, an administrative glitch at the diocese. In 2004, in June, we were registered with the state of Minnesota as a corporation, as all parishes have to be. I assumed at that time that that meant we were a parish. The administrative glitch is that apparently the Archbishop is supposed to put something in our file, naming us a full parish. That didn't happen. When all kinds of things were happening in terms of closing down parishes and stuff, they got a little antsy and nervous, and so there's always been talk about, not only here, but throughout the Archdiocese, about parishes closing or being merged or whatever. So the Archbishop has asked, as a proof for our viability, that we come to five hundred households, and to do that, we need your help with that, obviously, but he wants us there so that we can sustain ourselves into the future and not run into trouble. So that's an important thing to keep in mind. We do have four hundred and fifty-two households presently, and that's good, so we do need to work at, and that's part of the reason we're doing the door-to-door campaign. So if you have not yet volunteered for the door-to-door campaign, it would be a wonderful thing for you to do that and go out two by two with somebody in order, that we can cover more neighborhoods and therefore a greater exposure in the community of St. Catherine Drexel. Secondly, in terms of the fear of being closed, quite simply, in late August, I met with the Archbishop, and we had a wonderful conversation, and it was very frank and very open, and we talked about this very thing. And it was very clear to me in my conversation with the Archbishop that he is not thinking, not thinking about closing St. Catherine Drexel. He talked to me about the future, not our demise. So that's the simple answer.
Thank you, Father Paul. The next question is for Deacon Randy. Deacon Randy, the Archdiocese is just going to take away my money and then shut us down. Why should I donate?
We are a separate legal entity, so money that we have is Catherine Drexel's, the Archdiocese has no right to any of our funds, but if you make a donation to us, the regular Sunday contribution, that goes into supporting our programs and our ministries. But if you designate this money, this donation is only for this specific purpose. So if you give us a check and said that this is for our pastor and deacon to go have lunch with the Pope, we most likely are going to have to return-
That's a hypothetical example, right, Randy?
No, no. We're most likely going to have to return that check to you because that's something that's never going to happen. Our building plans falls into that same category. If you give a donation that's for the capital campaign, we can only use that for building. If we never build, we have to return that money to you. We cannot use it for anything else. So the Archdiocese is never going to touch funds that you give to us that are designated for something specific. They have no right to it. We have no right to use it for anything other than what you designate it has to be used for.
Thank you, Randy. The next question's for my dad. Dad, why are the Knights of Columbus no longer running the bar at parish events? Very important issue here.
First of all, because of the growth of the youth programs, parish leadership decided that Beer, Brats, and Bingo would be now designated as a youth event, and, and the youth are getting their parents and volunteers to tend the bar and use the proceeds in order to support their programs and the mission trip. In the past, the KCs did run the bar, but we also donated all the tips to the youth, and we donated part of our money back to the parish anyway. So it was a very small fundraiser for the Knights. As you can, as previously posted, the Knights last year donated fourteen thousand five hundred dollars to the church, to the missions, to the community. So we have more than adequate funds for taking care of the Knights and the needs of the community.
Don't go too far, Dad. We got another question for you. Why are the Knights of Columbus not being allowed to use the hospitality room for their meetings?
Well, again, I think that question's been answered, we, we just don't have the space, and we have conflicts on certain nights, and it just made sense that if the youth are meeting, they should be near the youth room where all their resources are. So again, the Knights had to move into the parish, parish proper here. So yes, it is an inconvenience, it is a change, but that's part of not having space.
Coming up on our last question or statement here, so Dad, I'll ask you to respond to this one as well. We have tried to build a church for a decade and a half and haven't been able to do so. If we ran our household like that, we'd be bankrupt. Your thoughts on that statement?
Well, I, I think, first of all, if you take a look at, at this church, probably ninety-five plus percent of our budget is fixed. Okay, if we're going to open the front door, we have to spend this money. And as Paul has alluded to and other, other members of the panel have alluded to, we, we are extremely fiscally responsible with our, with our resources. At the same time, over the past years, we've had to deal with, with less attendance because of COVID, and if we have less people attending, we have less funds coming in. And as Paul has alluded to before, we start every year with zero dollars of income, but we start every year with those expenses. So every year is a challenge for us, and if people would run their household like we run this church, they would have all their neighbors mowing the lawn, they would have the neighbors painting their houses, they would have, they would have the neighbors shoveling the driveway. Okay? So, so I think we are making extremely good uses of our resources. While, while money seems to be the main focus, also remember that the volunteers are our most important resources. We cannot operate this church without resources. I made a comment last night that over the last couple of years, this church has done everything to, to take care of the health of its parishioners with live streaming, sanitation, special things. parishioners with live streaming, sanitation, special things. Now is the time for our parishioners to bring the health of this church back to what it was before COVID. So again, I'm sure you're doing that in your households. We would ask that you continue to keep the church on the list when it comes to that also.
Thanks, Dad. So let's talk a little bit about our next steps. First and foremost, we ask you to continue to pray. Pray for the parish, pray for leadership, pray for continued growth for our community. In terms of continued growth, we really need everyone's help in recruiting new households. As Father said earlier, join the door-to-door campaign, invite and welcome people. One of the core themes that comes out when we talk to new households who have joined our parish is how welcoming we are. So continue to do that. For our third next step, I'm going to turn it back over to Kathy P. for an important word about the capital campaign. Kathy?
Thanks, Mike. So moving forward with the capital campaign, just a reminder, we have had 117 parishioners that have pledged, and that's of our 452 households. So please contribute in whatever way you possibly can. There are lots of different avenues, everything from, we have online, you can contribute for the capital campaign. There's also the envelopes, if you are receiving the envelopes. There are pledge cards and more information in the back of church as well. So we encourage you to do that and share the same with your fellow parishioners. Also, on the almost-home information, you can see that's just a high-level look at where we stand. Our numbers have improved, by the way, and part of that is due to investments. You can see that our remaining amount to kind of hit that $5 million point is that we have $1,465,000. That is our remainder that we need to have pledged because our amount in the bank is there. So that's all that we have, and then we can evaluate in May of next year to see if that is what we need in order to build. And also, keep in mind that pledges are for three years. So if you start now, that draws out for a full three years. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. I want to wrap up here by, first of all, thanking our panelists. I also want to thank the members of the parish council and finance councils, the building committee, and the capital campaign committees who helped prepare for the town hall. I want to thank Troy, Grace, John, all the members of the youth group who helped prepare the presentation and set up all the audio visuals for today's town hall. Finally, I want to thank all of you for attending. Please, as Kathy Reed indicated, or please continue to reach out to us if you have questions and comments. You certainly know Father Paul and Deacon Randy's email and contact information. As trustees, Kathy Reed and I are available as well via email with any questions or concerns you might have. One final announcement here, a final from London, Vikings 28, Saints 25. That win was brought to you by St. Catherine Drexel Leadership. Thank you all. Have a good Sunday.